Good evening, it is 7:31 and I would like to call to order the September 27th meeting of the Common Council. Clerk, if you will please call up. First of all, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, the two thirty five, we are the Americans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. Now, Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett?
President.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner? Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers? Mr. Uvelman?
Present.
Ms. Revlouz? Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Caides?
Here.
Ms. McMur?
Present.
Ms. Alterman?
Here.
Mr. Meek?
Here.
Mr. Livingston?
Here.
Ms. Shanahan?
Here.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner? Ms. Ayers? Ms. Revlouz? We have twelve, we have a-
Next item. Agenda, Acceptance of the Minutes, Regular Meeting of September 6th, 2022. I'm sorry, the Special Meeting, September 6th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, any corrections, deletions, omissions? Mr. Burnett?
Yes, just a minor typo on page five of the minutes where it reads, Ms. Smith added that this is an annual, that word should be "event," E-V-E-N-T.
Okay. Any further corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the approval of the minutes of September 13th, 2022, regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur?
Of those minutes, the third paragraph, the fourth sentence, she reads, she added that she appreciated, that "W-O-K" should be "W-O-R-K," the work. Minor correction.
Any further corrections? Omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as corrected. Motion opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Please be reminded to restrict your comments to items that currently appear on the agenda, and your time limit is three minutes.
Ms. Lisa Britton?
Good evening. So nice to see everybody face to face, eye to eye. Lisa Britton, 19 Shorefront Park. I'm here to speak tonight about the marijuana ordinance and retail outlets. Just wanted to say, I support the state's legalization and decriminalization, but I do have concerns, which I've echoed in other meetings, over the designated public smoking spaces. I do feel that whatever revenue is going to be generated, I fear it's going to be spent on ordinance enforcement, violations, and various nuisances. We spent years banning cigarette smoking in public spaces, and the smell of pot is even more pungent and invasive to the public's quality of life. Mr. Mayor, we've agreed on very little over the years, but if I think back to our debates several years ago, both of us shared a concern over marijuana. So I ask you to be very judicious when you choose the locations about where the pot is going to be allowed to be smoked in this city. I also want to say, I'm pleased to be able to speak here in person tonight. I do think we need to get public comments and meetings back into City Hall. And while I agree that Zoom is great in terms of allowing more people to observe, I think we're denied the opportunity to see how many of our fellow citizens share in our views, and it allows us again to look you guys squarely in the eye, smile at you, Greg, and see how we all are. So good to be back. Because transparency is the foundation of our democracy. I think we saw today how quickly things can go awry when the public thinks they've been left out of a public process with our Board of Ed. So I thank you, great to see everybody, and welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britton.
Mr. Bonifat?
Thanks a lot. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you all too. Chris Bonifat, 17th Park of Norwalk. I'm here to speak on the cannabis ordinance that you've been working on. And I'll give you credit, you put a lot of effort into it, so you know. So I'm not going to earn any criticism about what I got to say. I think that the council is advocating or running away from their responsibility by saying the mayor will designate the spot or those spots where it will be consumed, because when things start going wrong, I won't say you're going to throw them onto the bus, but you get to say, "I didn't do it." You're going to say, "He picked it." So, and on the other, on the other end of the spectrum, where you're designating the zoning commission to say where these locations are going to be, well, maybe you want to like be a little more forceful and tell them where you want it to be, because you're the one taking charge of this, of this operation. So, you know, when things go wrong, once again, you get to say, "Well, I didn't pick it." And, you know, you get these words like equity tossed around, and I see in the paper where zoning director would say, "Well, we're going to put it on Westport Avenue, Main Avenue, and Connecticut Avenue. This way it'll mitigate the traffic." Well, you know, if you're going to take the equity money that's being generated there and put it to another place, then put the retail spots in the equity, in the equity zones. Because honestly, I don't want it on Westport Avenue. And, and there's a double-edged sword in there. You're saying that, okay, you can't, or the zoning is going to say, "Okay, you can't put it within so many feet of a daycare or a church or whatever." But don't forget the other side of the coin. If you found a spot to put one of these retail outlets, then forever, you'll never be able to put a kiddie gym or a daycare center or anything like that. So putting it on like the corridors might be counterproductive. All right? All right, as far as enforcing the consumption part, well, good luck, because you can't even like control dogs in the park, right? Dogs are a lot harder to sneak into the park than it is for a little bag of weed. You're going to see that. So, you know, how are you going to, and the tax revenue? Well, Ms. Britton kind of hinted on that. I got a feeling that's all going to get eaten up if you're going to actually take control of your parks when things happen that you didn't anticipate, and everybody's smoking weed in every park, and you're going to get down on the police and tell them to-
You're right, you're right at three minutes now, so-
Okay, well, you got the idea.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifat.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Douglas Farrell?
Thank you. Martin Douglas Farrell, 5 Lookout Road, Norwalk. I don't have a speech, so I'm going to try to leave it here. I'm actually totally against it all together. I hope you guys really consider this simply because every political debate I've been to, one of the questions is always, "How do we keep drugs out of school?" Politicians always sit there and they sanctimoniously say, "Oh, we need education. We need to teach people how bad drugs are." And now the town council is going to authorize this. What's a parent supposed to do when he's trying to convince the kids, "Drugs are bad, but the city authorized it"? You're cutting us off, you know, you're taking away that argument. We're on the losing side of the argument because you guys have just justified it. I think it's wrong, I think you're making a mistake, I don't think you're going to raise the money you thought you were going to raise. Put in a sunset clause. If you don't get the amount of money that you think you're going to get, make this call away. I'm against it. I am glad we are in person, so thank you for that, and I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Milligan?
Good evening. Jason Milligan, 11 Baldinav, Norwalk. I would like to talk about Agenda Item 6A, which is the Corporation Council. I have been sued by the city of Norwalk-
Mr. Milligan, this is not an item that's on the agenda for the evening.
I beg your pardon? It is on the agenda.
There's no item under Corporation Council, you're out of order. Please sit down.
Excuse me?
Please sit down.
No.
Mr. Milligan, please sit down.
I am entitled to talk for three minutes.
You're out of order.
How am I out of order?
There is nothing on the agenda under the Corporation Council.
I see Agenda Item 6A as Corporation Council.
You cannot talk an item-
You're wasting minutes, I would have been almost a third minute now.
You cannot talk an item, a topic on an item. You can't come in here and say, "I'd like to talk about Council Committees." You can't do that. So you're out of order, please- Mr. Milligan, please sit down. You're out of order. You're out of order, I'm ruling you out of order. And if you don't sit down, you're going to be taken out. So, sit down, Mr. Milligan. Mr. Milligan, you want to talk about marijuana? Okay, you have three minutes to talk about marijuana.
I think that you might be out.
The minute you divert from that, you'll be asked to sit down.
Well, so, I believe that topics can take a different angle than you might expect. Are you going to tightly control every aspect of everyone's speech up here?
No.
Part of the problem is, I want a relationship with the leaders of this city. They've been elected, they've been tightly locked down since 2015.
Are you going to talk about marijuana?
Yes, of course, but please stop interrupting me.
Please talk about marijuana.
When does the clock start for my three minutes?
Right now.
Great. You throw me all off, and then I'm only limited to three minutes. I'm saying, since 2015, I've been under litigation. Constantly. I've been muzzled, I've been censored, and when I tried to talk, here's a perfect example. I could have had three minutes, it would have been done, and you're shut. Why can't I talk? Why can't they hear from my mouth? It always has to go through a certain filter. There is a filter.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes?
You're out of order, please sit down. Now, please sit down. You are out of order, you are not discussing an item that's on the agenda, and that rule of the Common Council is there for a reason. The reason is because people could just come in and talk about anything for hours and hours. Well, Mr. Milligan, please sit down.
Also to speak about, also to speak about, also to speak about, not on the agenda, might lead to the question.
Mr. Livingston? Mr. Livingston makes a motion for recess. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We're in recess. We're back in session at 7:50 now. Ms. Dixon, if you'll call the next speaker, please.
Ms. Smarniopoulos?
Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the podium.
Why don't you let me speak, and then maybe I'll inspire you to say something that might assist the agenda?
You've already had your time. You've been ruled out of order three times. You've been ruled- Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the floor. Yes. Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the floor. Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the floor. Mr. Milligan, if you'll yield the floor as a gentleman. Yes, we've cut you off. You don't have the right to disrupt this proceeding.
I would, I came up here to speak, I have three minutes, I would have been done.
And every time you started speaking-
You interrupted me all the time. How do you know where I'm going to go in my thought? I can barely think straight every time you interrupt me. I came here with great intentions. I was talking to the council. I have nothing but respect for everyone on this council.
You are out of order.
How am I out of order?
Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the floor. Mr. Milligan, if we have to call security upstairs, we will.
They're upstairs?
If we have to call them upstairs, we will.
And?
And you'll be removed from the council chamber.
Tom Livingston?
Ms.-
You're the president.
Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have-
I was reading Mario said, "You're in charge of the agenda." And are you in charge of who gets to speak for three minutes? Would you like to let me speak for three minutes? Are you that scared to hear from me?
Would you ask me-
Are you that scared to hear from me, Tom? Yes? I need that? Okay, why do I have to? I was also trying to get part of the process, and I was interrupted by the president. Do you have to?
We have to look. Ms. Smarniopoulos, you have the floor.
I would like this to finish before I start speaking, because it's a little disruptive.
I'm going to sit down, but- I'm on the seat, I have a right to listen. They've been suing me for marijuana.
Donna Smarniopoulos, Shorefront Park. I'm here to talk about the cannabis ordinance. I'm assuming you're all going to vote in favor, except for one. So rather than telling you not to vote in favor, I'd like to add a little, a few suggestions for how you should handle the revenue stream that you're expecting. So the state has predicted $18 to $20 million in revenue, and Norwalk should get a pretty good-sized chunk of that. And what I was thinking, instead of what you had originally thought for where you should dedicate those monies, based on the news I heard today, you need all of the revenue that you make from this, you need it to help pay for litigation. You have many outstanding bills from ongoing lawsuits that go back as far as 2018. You have new litigation starting today from a former employee of the Norwalk Public Schools who is suing under the Americans with Disabilities Act. I predict he's going to win that. And so I think if you vote to proceed, instead of putting it in a pile that goes to the community, you should put it into a lockbox to pay for the lawsuits. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smarniopoulos. That concludes public session, unless there's somebody online, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, sir. If there is anyone remote that would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now, and I will unmute you. Thank you.
Thank you, we will close public participation. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, there's someone with the name M. If you unmute yourself, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record.
You'd like to try again? I don't think we've gotten anything.
All right, there's Danielle. Danielle, please unmute yourself, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Danielle Ben-David on that 160 Grumman Avenue in Norwalk. Calling in to speak about the poured-in-place rubber that's apparently going to be utilized at a lot of the playgrounds locally. I've been doing some research about this material and the linkage to health problems including cancers, and I find it a huge concern for myself and my family. I have three children in the district, in the school district, so this is, you know, very relevant to us at this time, but of course to many families in Norwalk. And I want to know what's being done to educate the public, and I want to know if there will be a chance to vote on what material will be used. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chris S., if you unmute yourself, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Chris Shimko, I live on Bumblebee Lane. I just was reading this through, this grant we have, I guess there's $500,000 being allocated to Freeze Park. I haven't read, I haven't seen a lot on this. I just know that park is very small, not utilized by many people, and there are many parks and school grounds that could use that $500,000 for refurbishment, one of them being Ponis and other schools around town. So I think we need to look at that, rather than putting in new fences and spending $500,000 on a park that nobody uses. I don't know if there's a bigger picture here, if there's somewhere I can go to look and read about that, I would like to do that, but $500,000 for, what is it? 500 square feet, 500 feet wide? It just doesn't make sense for half a million dollars when other parks greatly use those funds. That's about it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Manzi?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. Danielle Toya, please unmute yourself. Thank you.
They're clearing rings, what in the world? I think we're getting swatted. I think we're getting swatted, what in the world?
Danielle Toya?
We didn't even vote on pot, huh?
All right, there are no more people remotely looking to speak, Mayor.
So now we will close public participation. Resignations and appointments. Ms. Iliana Zuniga has resigned from the Commission on Status of Women. She has new employment that doesn't allow her to serve. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Richard Dellinger to the Oak Hills Park Authority. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. And if I just may introduce Mr. Dellinger, he is a principal currently at Amity Regional Middle School in Bethany, has been for quite some time since 2004, and has served as an educator since about 1980. Math teacher, assistant principal, also serving as an adjunct professor at Fairfield University and Sacred Heart University. So as a former educator myself, I absolutely admire the resume of Mr. Dellinger. Educators manage the challenges of diverse thoughts and agendas quite well, and Oak Hills has many, you know, different thoughts and agendas that need to be addressed, and so I think he'll do a good job with that. He's also involved at Oak Hills. He's the chair, co-chairperson of the Tennis Friends of Oak Hills, and is also team captain of the Oak Hills 60-plus tennis team. So he's well-versed with Oak Hills and brings the tennis perspective, which is also valuable. Also an involved community member, has been a soccer coach and a member of the Norwalk High School Fathers Club. So I highly recommend his appointment, and I thank him for his willingness to serve.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Mr. Richard Dellinger on the Oak Hills Park Authority? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next is the appointment of John Church for the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Mayor, I would like to move that.
Ms. McMur?
Thank you. John Church has held many leadership roles, both professionally and throughout our community. I've personally had the pleasure of seeing him in action in one of those roles, up close and personal, and I admire the time and dedication he gives to Norwalk. He's also been commission chair for the City of Norwalk Fair Rent Commission, is always honest, direct, and fair. He's also one of the smartest people I've ever met, and one of the most thoughtful when it comes to large decisions. I wholeheartedly recommend him for the position, and thank him for taking on this role.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Mayor's remarks. I just have a very brief remark this evening relative to coming up on October 8th at the Maritime Aquarium. There will be a celebration of life and a tribute to former Mayor Bill Collins. We all know he passed away in a car accident in Texas, and so the public is invited, and there'll be a lot of his friends and family there to speak about all his accomplishments and the things he's done for the City of Norwalk. Mr. President, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we turn to the consent calendar, I just wanted to comment on a request we received last week at a public discussion of the litigation with Mr. Milligan to the council agenda. As members of the council know, it is our longstanding, probably always been the practice, not to discuss ongoing litigation in an open forum. Doing so could have a significant adverse presidential effects on the city's ability to resolve matters on terms favorable to the city and its residents. However, and has, as we have done many times in the past, we will continue to keep members of the council updated on this and all other significant litigation. And to that end, we will be having an executive session and a special meeting of the council on October 17th at 6:30 PM to update the council on this matter. I'll note that the scheduling of this session is unrelated to the recent publicity. Rather, it was scheduled some time ago to align with the upcoming mediation of the parties currently scheduled for October 20th, and it's scheduled to provide council members with the most current information. And of course, in the meantime, members are, as always, free to contact Mr. Capola with any questions regarding this or any litigation. And with that, I'll turn to Mr. Burnett for the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Council President. The consent calendar for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. Item 7A under Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. Item 7A1, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into agreement with Marching Bears, Inc. for the use of NHS athletic field and immediate surrounding grounds for the cavalcade bands event to be held Saturday, October 8th, 2022, from 11:30 AM to 9 o'clock PM, set up to begin at 8 AM with teardown at 10 PM, approximately 1,000 people. Item 7A2, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Bobcat of Connecticut, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $82,211 for the purchase of Bobcat Toolcat, UW3, from the capital account, as noted, of the cow buys pricing contract, FAC88. Item 7A3, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Embarkscape Equipment, LLC, DBA RC mowers, in amount not to exceed $62,950 for the purchase of a tracked 60-inch mower from capital count, as noted, off the HGAC GR20AAF1 pricing contract. Item 7A5, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Gendrus Ford in amount not to exceed $142,345.80 for the purchase of 3F250 regular cab 4x4 pickup trucks from offer count, as noted, of the state contract number 19PSX0161. Item 7A6, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into agreement with Garpro Contracting, Inc. for project number RNP 2022-3-Freeze Park Railing Rehabilitation for a sum not to exceed $129,650, Phase 1, Alternate 2, $159,569.30, Phase 2, $112,418, Phase 3, $124,193.50, Phase 4, accounts numbers as noted. Item 7A6A, authorize the director of Recreation and Parks to execute change orders on contract, GeoCorp Contracting, Inc. for amount not to exceed $52,583.80, account numbers as noted. Item B under Public Safety and General Government, item 7B1, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a lease with the Norwalk Hospital Association for the purposes of installing and maintaining a radio communication antenna and equipment on and within existing structures for an initial term of five years with five successive five-year renewal periods. Item D, Community Services Communit- Committee, item 7D1, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to accept and receive child grant care grant funds allocated to the City of Norwalk from the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood, E, excuse me, OEC, for the state fiscal year 2023 and 2024. That completes the consent calendar for today. Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I'll now fall for a vote on the consent calendar as read. All in favor? Anybody raising your hands? Any opposed? Abstentions, seeing none? Consent calendar passed as read. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, first item on the agenda for off the consent calendar, item 7A for A through, uh, D, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. 7A4, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to MEO Brian &amp; Sons for the following playground renovations of the Connecticut State Prices Pricing Contract, number 17PSX0081. For A, Devon's Place Playground, amount not to exceed $316,558.35 from capital account, as noted. For B, Bowman Street Park, amount not to exceed $114,556.65 from ARPA account number noted. And for C, Flax Hill Park, amount not to exceed $132,268.40 from the ARPA account, uh, noted. So we moved the item there, is that?
And for D?
I'm sorry, I did not see that. And for D, thank you. Authorize the director of Recreation and Parks or his designee to issue change orders on the renovation of Devon's Place Playground in amount not to exceed $31,658 from the same capital account.
So Ms. Young has moved the item and you have the floor, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think we have, um, Ken Hughes and, uh, hopefully Mr. Stowers on the line to speak to, um, these issues. These, these projects are not issues, they're very good projects. Ken?
Hi, good, good evening, Mayor and, uh, council members. Um, so I just wanted to touch briefly on our slated, uh, playground renovations. Um, Devon's Place Playground, which as you know, is a, uh, 100% boundless playground, um, was built many years ago and we're starting to have a hard time finding playground pieces. So we had a, under our capital, um, capital process, we went through a, um, sort of a redesign of, of the playground, which would include a few updates on some of the equipment, as well as a new, uh, rubber ported place, uh, surfacing. And the reason why we use the, uh, ported place surfacing at Devon's is because it is an ADA playground is an ease of maneuverability in terms of those with disabilities and wheelchairs, uh, to be able to utilize and access all the playground, uh, pieces. So the other two playgrounds on the list, uh, which are Bowman Street as well as Flax Hill Park, those were on our long-term, uh, capital project list. But, uh, you know, thank you for the ARPA funding. Those are going to happen much sooner rather than later. So that's a true testament on how the ARPA monies are saving, uh, actual tax dollars in terms of work that we had scheduled. We're just bringing them aboard a lot sooner because the money's available. So I'm here, if you guys have any questions or need some further clarification.
Uh, Ms. Alterman.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a couple of questions and I wanted to say thank you. I do appreciate trying to provide me with all the information. I apologize for being sort of out of touch recently. Um, what time of year are they going to be pouring the pour-in-place rubber?
So we're going to try to schedule the construction of the playground, uh, late fall, early winter with a finish in spring of '23. So one of the last things they do would be the surfacing material. So we'll be looking at spring of '23.
Okay, because I, I was reading, um, I've been doing research on all of this similar materials, right? This is the one I know the least about. Um, the, the temperature outside matters as well as the weather. So I assume they'll have to be like accommodations made if it's in spring?
I believe it's 50 degrees day or night temperature. We have the same issue when we do our, our, like our concrete epoxy tennis courts. We, we constantly have to work around the weather. So yeah, so the installer won't install if the temperature isn't correct because they warranty the product.
Okay, the other question, it's, it's a similar basement, but it's what's the underlying, um, like crushed stone under it? Because that also has to cure for 28 days? Which is a long time in spring.
So, so, uh, I don't, I, I believe cure is not, not the correct terminology. Uh, what they do is when the contractor lays the stone, we actually have a compaction test done before they cover the stone with the base material. So that, that's probably what you mean by, by a cure. But it's a, it's a natural stone, it's a three-quarter inch trap rock and then a three-quarter inch processed rock on top of that. So there's really no cure, but they do have to make sure that, that it passes the compaction test before they put on the surfacing.
I might, I mean, I might be confused, which was why I was like, I, I think I need more time to do research, but it said the only acceptable underlaying thing was concrete. It said I'll try to use different stone, but that, that is
No, that's, that's, yeah, that, that's not true. We've done, we've done other surfaces. Uh, we have an existing one up at the ADA Playground up at Roosevelt that used a, a stone base.
Okay. Um, so I, I saw that you said you haven't had to do any reconditioning on the other playground.
Correct, the first Yep, the first one we had installed was the Catfish Beach Flashpad, which I believe was installed in 2015. So that's going on seven years now. And that, that gets a lot of use down at the beach.
Does that, and that gets direct sunlight, right? Because it's a water pump, so the kids are Okay.
Correct.
Um, I, the, the other question was like, just if you have to redo it, because that wouldn't be in this budget, how much does that cost?
Um.
Like the, the simple reconditioning, not, not like completely redoing the project?
So I don't think, I, I, I don't think there's a, a way to recondition. So when, when it gets to the point where there's a complete failure and it becomes dangerous, um, I think it's a, a complete replacement, which is sort of what we're doing at Devon's Place now. And that's almost, uh, 20 years. Uh, we do have the ability to fix, uh, tears or if somebody actually, you know, burns a section of the rubber. So we have the ability to repair sections. But in terms of reconditioning, if it gets to the point where it's dangerous, then it's, it's a replacement and they do recycle the old material.
Yeah, I mean, most of the research I done previous to knowing about this project is that the PIP can harden over time and that is why you do the reconditioning. So you're saying that isn't the case?
I, I haven't had experience with reconditioning. Do, do you know what the reconditioning entails?
No, I, I mean, I can have pages of notes, but I can follow up after for future projects. Like I'm, I assume I'm going to be the only know, which is okay, but, um, the I've done a lot of research, so all of the things you're saying something's different. I, I don't know.
So a lot, a lot of, a lot of these installs are unique to, to New England in terms of, you know, compaction tests and crushed stone and the amount of stone that's used. So when you are doing research, make sure you're looking at, you know, areas local to us, because an install in Florida is going to be completely different than an install in Connecticut.
Well, I was looking at Maine, um, was the place that most of the research was out of. There was that other study about a different material that was, um, in New Hampshire, but I don't think there was one in Boston. And again, that was a different material. They're similar. But, um, my only other concern, but I think it might be based on because these surfaces are said to be like they harden was the risk of injury to kids while they're sort of reported as being the safest. They, they can actually cause more severe injuries in some cases, but we can talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you want to see an example of, of a failure, go take a look at Devon's Place and you'll see what the, the surface looks like when it, when it actually fails. And you can feel it too. That's, that's, you know, 20, 20 years or so. So you can feel how that surface still feels and whether or not you think it, it hardens over time.
Sure. And then, um, you just made a comment about ADA. So what playgrounds are not ADA compliant?
Uh, so there, there's a difference between 100% boundless and ADA compliant.
Okay.
So all of our playgrounds have to be ADA compliant. Uh, the playground at NECC up at Roosevelt and Devon's Place are 100% accessible and we call them the boundless playgrounds.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Further discussion or comment, Ms. McMur?
Um, Ken, can you go ahead and speak to us about the materials used in, um, the surface? Just because somebody else brought it up and I'm curious as to, um, what the environmental impacts and safety issues are, if any, for the children?
Sure. And I do have a, um, I, I did email this information to Heidi a little while ago, but I could email it to the entire committee in terms of testing and, and makeup of material and exactly what's in the material. Um, I'm going to be very short and only because I'm not a scientist, but it's a, it's a virgin rubber, which is used as a top coating in a recycled rubber, which is used as the base coating. Which is encapsulated with a, um, uh, urethane. So I can, I can give you all the testing information in terms of, uh, metal content and you know, if anything leach is out, I, I have all that information I can forward. You know, I wasn't really prepared, you know, with that information to that extent tonight. But I do have it available. I could send it out to the full, the full council.
That would be really great. We just want to make sure that this is as safe as possible for our kids.
Absolutely. And these, um, you know, this surfaces, this surfaces is approved by IPMA, which is the International Play Equipment Manufacturers Association, which is a, a nationwide association that dictates safety standards and things with play equipment. So it's sort of the industry standard in terms of playground surfacing. But I'll send along, I'll send along that information for you guys.
Thank you, Ken.
Sheriff Hooverman. And then Ms. Shanahan.
No, so I just, um, just for clarification, is it just Devon's Place where the rubber is going to be used or?
Correct. It's just Devon's Place. Yep. It's going to be engineered with fiber over at Flax Hill and Bowman Street.
Mr. Hooverman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ken, what, what procedure do you have to go through of disposing the material, of the material that's currently at Devon's Place?
Uh, that is done by the manufacturer. So we use Surface America. That's the company that installs our rubberized surfacing. And they actually, uh, recycle any existing surfacing that they remove.
And then did you say, I, I think I heard you say you had some material that showed leaching numbers from this material?
Uh, I have, I have a, a probably eight or nine different types of test results that I can send you guys and, uh, as well as a write-up also.
And this is basically the modern version of the current material that's on the Devon's Place surface now?
Yeah, yeah, I think Modern is putting it a lot. Yeah.
20, 20 years later.
Yes.
So it's a newer technology.
It's come, it's come a long way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
For you. Further? Oh, David, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, overzealous, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Ken. I just to follow up, uh, from a couple of my colleagues, just to confirm, because it's a industry standard we're using here. Um, there's been no carcinogens found in, found in it, just to confirm.
Not that, no, not, not that, not that we're aware of. And I was talking to Heidi earlier. Um, I'm a member of a lot of trade industries across, across the nation. And we usually get a lot of the latest greatest information in terms of these type of materials. So there hasn't been any red flags to date that I have seen in terms of ported place surfacing.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Further comment or discussion?
I just have a quick question. Am I allowed to vote no on the one part, but yes on the rest?
Who's that?
She wants to separate the A.
Go ahead, Ms. Alterman.
She wants to vote no on one part, but D, not the other three, so maybe um, I, I, we'd have to separate them out, you know?
Ms. Young will, will separate out and vote, um, on each item separately. Right? So if there's no further discussion or questions or comments?
Was there a motion to separate them out? Because there was already a motion to move all four together.
Well, I just asked her, she
Yeah, I'll read each one. Right, okay.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Uh, item A. Or 74, item
So may, so you want me to read 74A?
Read 7, uh, the first part, 4, I guess that has to be voted on also.
Okay, so I'll do 4 and then 4A. I'll read them that way. Uh, 7A4, 4, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to MEO and Brian &amp; Sons for the following playground renovations of the, of the Connecticut State Pricing Contract for A Devon's Place Playground amount not to exceed $316,558.35 from capital account number noted.
So items 4 and 4A have been moved. Um, any comment or questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm confused about something. Item 4 relates to A, B, C, and D. So we're moving those two items together right now. And I believe item 4A is the item in question. I think item 4A needs to be separated out, just as a clarification.
Okay, so we voted to separate them, so we'll vote on item 4 first.
Thank you, Ms. McMur. Sorry.
So all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Ms. Young, item 7A4A?
Uh, Devon's Place Playground, amount not to exceed $316,558.35 from capital account noted.
Item has been moved. Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, three opposed abstentions.
Abstention.
Okay, so Mr. Hooverman abstains, Ms. Shanahan and Ms. Alterman voted no. Uh, Mr. Meek, I'm sorry, I, you voted in favor?
I voted affirmative, yes.
So, uh, the two no, negative votes, Ms. Shanahan and Ms. Alterman, and a abstention for Mr. Hooverman. Item 7A4B, Ms. Young?
Bowman Street Park, amount not to exceed $114,556.65 from ARPA account number noted.
Uh, motion, uh, made. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Item 7A4C?
Black Hill Park, amount not to exceed $132,268.40 from ARPA account number noted.
Item has been moved. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item 7A4D?
Authorize the director of Recreation and Parks or his designated issue change orders on the renovation of Devon's Place Playground in an amount not to exceed $31,658 from the same capital account.
Item has been moved. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstention.
One abstention, Mr. Hooverman, other than that, the motion care, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I, I voted in the affirmative, but, um, for my colleagues who voted, um, yes on 4A, 4D is simply the cost overrun for 4A. I don't reconcile those votes. I, I don't reconcile, are you for the extent before the overrun or?
I'm actually, um, going to abstain.
No, that's the same. That's a mistake. I apologize.
All right, so Ms. Shanahan, you're
I went to abstention, sorry.
And Ms. Alterman?
Negative.
Hey, uh, that concludes that section, um, item 7C1, Ms. Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is approved, proposed new ordinance of the City Code Regulation of Cannabis. And I just wanted to, um, give a little bit of a coda before I turn this over to Mr. Goldstein, who's done primarily most of the work. As a committee, we turned it over to Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Keegan, to do the primary research. This work started about a year ago. We've worked closely with the mayor's office and all of the This work started about a year ago. We worked closely with the mayor's office and all of the departments within the city to coordinate what we thought was most important ways to regulate cannabis in our um city based upon the fact that the state had legislated that uh cannabis was going to be legal and that um the sale of cannabis can happen in different jurisdictions. So we took uh the state statute and we went with that and um I will have Mr. Goldstein talk about the work that he and Mr. Keegan did to craft this very thoughtful, in my mind, regulation.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Ms. Shanahan, and I appreciate uh the ordinance committee and your leadership and your guidance throughout this long process. Um so very simply, last summer, uh Connecticut decriminalized and legalized cannabis, which of course, we're relative in Norwalk, having to figure out um basically decisions on both how to regulate how it would be consumed and used, as well as whether to engage in and permit retail sales. Um, after a month-long process where we've worked with uh community members, uh state and local government officials, we believe that our proposed ordinance represents a thorough and thoughtful approach to regulating cannabis in Norwalk. The ordinance really does three things. One, it regulates public consumption. Um, specifically, it doesn't um, permit you to smoke, uh people to smoke or consume uh cannabis in any form, whether it's an edible or uh 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 through uh the traditional smoking um in any space that's owned or controlled by the city. That includes sidewalks, streets, parks, and beaches. Um, that's included but not limited to. Um, so that's first. Second, if because we are regulating public consumption, we have to um by the state law, we are required to have a designated spot. One of the issues that we confronted was how to deal with the the issue that if we put a specific spot in the ordinance itself and we and we learned whether it was a public safety issue or if there was an unseen issue, how to be able to respond to that quickly. And so we we created a policy and that's frankly rather novel. Um, but by delegating it to the administration, we found that that was the best way um to be able to make quick changes on the ground and respond to information, whether it be from law enforcement or other regulators. Um, you know, I I I do disagree with the contention, though I understand that that it may feel like passing buck. We actually thought it was the cogent uh decision, given the extraordinary requirement that the state imposed on us. Um, the second thing is quite simply to introduce a highly regulated and profitable industry in Norwalk. Um, that both encompasses um the kind of, you know, regulation for the product itself. It means that when you go and purchase retail cannabis at a retail store, you are not going to be purchasing it, a product that would be laced with an illegal substance like fentanyl. Um, there are quality controls that are regulated by our by state regulators to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen. Um, so a- as uh uh Director Steve Kleppen said at our committee meeting the other day, um as part of the zoning permit um, uh, retail retailers will have to also provide information such as a security plan um in order to be able to obtain a permit, as well as, of course, in addition to a a state license. Um, this is also uh both highly regulated, but also a known to be a profitable industry that would come to the city. Um, as has been discussed, um, this would create and and then and we, this ordinance also regulates um that additional revenue stream um that would fund important and equitable community programs. Um, very simply, uh, a three percent municipal sales tax is something that doesn't usually happen. Um, that is a state-created thing, and that's something that we decided, um, you know, as a as a council, um, that would bring a lot of benefit to a number uh to many citizens across the city. Um, there was something in the public comment that I do want to address. There was a suggestion that public that these funds could be used um to fund litigation. Um, we are actually required by the state, we are, there are strings attached to these monies. Um, whereby the money has to be spent on a certain number of stated purposes, um, including everything from educational programs to youth employment programs, treatment for mental health and addiction services, and services for people who were formerly incarcerated. Um, there are more, just and as well as of streetscape improvement and community development. Um, but we are constrained in how this money will be used, but one thing that we've done is we've created, we've directed the uh Chief of Community Services create guidelines whereby these funds are soliciting funds are regulated, applications are reviewed um in a nonpartisan grant review process. Um, but there is also a a a city oversight as well. Um basically, this has been an enormous undertaking that has really required help from a lot of different people across our government um and the community at large. Um, groups like the Norwalk Partnership and Margaret Watt played enormously helpful role helping us work through a lot of these issues. And of course, Norwalk City staff, including Leisha Kane, Brian Kandel, Steve Kleppen, uh Jess Vanashack, Lamont Daniels, Deanna Deamore, and Anella, and Yella, and Yon, um provided crucial help. Um, this is what we think is the first draft of something that an ordinance that will thoroughly and thoughtfully regulate cannabis. Um, and I am proud of this work. And I am proud of the work that um everyone on this panel has contributed to making this a better product. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shanahan?
Um, I think that Mr. Kleppen's on board um with us today. If there's any other um questions that people might want to direct to him, otherwise I'd open it up to council discussion. If there's any further thoughts or comments, people like to make questions.
Before that, any comments from the council people, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just wanted to thank um Ms. Shanahan for her leadership and particularly Mr. Goldstein for all the tireless work and effort you put into this. You just mentioned some of the things, but I know you've been working on this for many months. Reaching out to thought leaders across the state, getting the best information and putting together the best ordinance for the city. So I really appreciate that. I think we should all appreciate it. So thank you.
Mr. Hooverman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I too just want to say thank you to my friend Josh for the work that he's put in, also to uh our um former council colleague, Mr. Tom Keegan, who brought a lot of insight, being former law enforcement, to this process and to uh Ms. Shanahan for the leadership on the committee. Um, I didn't always agree with every piece of every uh uh line that we were working on in this, but I think that the spirit of what is uh here is positive. It's positive for Norwalk, and I think that it will uh, I think it will yield some uh very good benefits for the city. So thank you.
Further comment or discussion? Ms. McMur?
I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Um, Mr. Goldstein, you did a great job on this. I know you put a lot of hours and time into this, and I very much appreciate that. I told you from the beginning, I wanted nothing to do with it. So thank you for carrying the heavy load on that one. Thank you, Ms. Shanahan, for your leadership and to the committee. Um, I think I agree with Mr. Hooverman that this is um step in the right direction and it's the best outcome that we can hope for right now with this ordinance. So thank you.
Further comment or discussion? Mr. Meek?
Uh, I'm still in OVO and um, I'm not going to relitigate what I warned you to death within uh the committee, but I'm just going to remind you that you were about to approve three high-value targets for armed robbery. And this is all over the news everywhere, and I know you have a uh a security plan to be reviewed, but you know, these these things are higher value targets than banks. And um, I just think this is a solution that's looking for problems, and I'm going to vote no. Thanks.
Further discussion or comment?
Ms. Johnson.
I'm sorry. Oh, um, Ms. Uh Johnson again.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, want to echo as well, thanks to Councilmember Goldstein and uh Councilmember, former Councilmember Keegan for uh doing such a heavy lift on this. It's been great to be a part of this process on the ordinance committee. And I see that this has been such a collaborative effort under your leadership for that, so thank you. Um, I I too, uh, and I know we may have after this some chance to ask some questions, but I just want to say that I know through this process, it's been very important to me that we make sure that these dispensaries do not, uh, this is, this this does not get uh within a certain radius of school buildings in particular, but also our sensitive sites. And so I'm very happy to see that this is not only been a part of the conversation, but we have uh gotten some confirmation that that will in fact be how we approach this in Norwalk, and I I want to, I want to thank everyone. Uh, you know, I think that that's such an important part of this, uh, to keep our community uh as safe as possible, given that this has been legalized uh as well. I know that this is just the beginning. We've said that. This is part of an ongoing conversations and process in the community, especially with law enforcement, especially with community members. I know that having a liaison with law enforcement um would only make this better as we move forward, and and so I appreciate uh all of our partners um throughout this process, especially um our our, you know, providers, nonprofits, and and law enforcement in particular. Thank you.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yeah, I just wanted to just um reiterate one more time that um we are responding to the state ordinance, making it legal to um both consume and to sell cannabis in the state of Connecticut. And I think it would be a dereliction of duty for us not to take advantage of this three percent sales tax as it could be so beneficial to so many important programs that we do need to fund within our city. I think that um the time and thought that um Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Keegan and the rest of our community members have put into this, I think that we may well have drafted, you know, one of the most thoughtful cannabis ordinances that have been yet passed in the state of Connecticut. So I hope that others will take a look at our ordinance, and I also hope that um I'm sorry. Um, I hope that other people will take a look at our ordinance because we have worked that hard. And um I think that we will also benefit from looking at um the work that other people take our work and move it forward. So we're very excited to um see what other people come up with and improve our ordinance as need be.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I know you had of Ms. Smith and then Mr. Gold.
Yes, um, I I also would like to thank the members of the ordinance committee, Mr. Goldstein in particular, for your very uh hard work and uh thoroughness um on this ordinance. I can't say anything more than has already been said. Um, I do want to address um, what was said by the parent who spoke, uh, who was very much against this. You know, as a parent of three grown children, uh, two grandchildren, um, I understand the concerns, and I think the thing that um, is encouraging is how highly regulated this is and the protections in any of these um establishments. Um, it'll be treated like um alcohol. You know, you have to show a driver's license, you have to be twenty-one years of age. So there are protections around that. Kids are going to find it. I know, we know that, you know, we know that. Um, as a school teacher myself, you know, I I've just worked with a lot of kids. I I I, you know, I I understand the concerns. But when it is so highly regulated, um, there are protections for our kids.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, the only thing I also wanted to note is that it's, there are many purposes for which this and and Norwalk getting into the uh uh making the decisions to both uh uh permit the sale, but also regulate consumption. I mean, there are issues ranging from uh uh reducing the school-to-prison pipeline um and a number of other, you know, important valiant policy reasons um in addition to the three percent municipal sales tax um that weighed in favor of us creating an ordinance um that both sort of straddles the line of both um regulating uh public consumption, permitting retail sales, and providing a vehicle where people from across this area, not just Norwalk, but in uh towns that where retail sales are not permitted um would come be uh participate in Norwalk's commerce, both in purchasing these, but also hopefully stopping by at a restaurant or going to a store and encouraging that kind of business developments and and pro-business attitude that we've demonstrated for some time um to make sure that we straddle that balance. Um, and I believe that that ordinance, this ordinance does just that.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to also acknowledge the hard work of the ordinance committee. Um, thi- this is not easy work. Um, going through it now on another topic. Um, so I I I want to acknowledge the committee for the their commitment and their efforts. I did uh have a question, uh, a clarifying question. You know, this is, this is the beginning of an ongoing process, and as this rolls out, um, what are, what are the mechanisms for change? Um, i- i- if if we see that we need to go in some type of different direction or make a modification, maybe it would be helpful to just share what um, what would be involved to make that happen.
I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Goldstein. Certainly, um, one of the things that we did talk about was the reason why we empowered the mayor to choose the designated spot was so that we'd have the flexibility to be able to make changes uh on the dime, rather than having to come back and rewrite an ordinance. Certainly, as we get more data, we can rewrite the ordinance. And one of the other things is uh the regulations, the P and Z regulations. Those also are things that we can adjust as time goes on. But are there's things you'd like to?
Yeah, I mean, just adjust the ordinance. Um, I mean, if, you know, a- as with any ordinance, um amendments can be submitted, go through the process, you know, the committee process as is laid out. Um, and and if there's an amendment that needs to be done and we work on it, crafted, and if we find that there are things, changes that happen on the ground, we can make those changes. I mean, I mean, look at the state um where they passed the law last summer um in twenty twenty-one, and in May of twenty-two, actually made this past May um made in a pretty significant set of amendments um to this law. So this is an ongoing process. The P and the P and Z regulations that are being promulgated right now are also an ongoing process. And the guidelines for the uh what we're calling the Norwalk Cannabis Accounts, or this three percent municipal sales tax is also a um both can be revised by the administration, but also there are oversight provisions in the ordinance that the council can also um manage those guidelines and suggest um and work on modifications um if necessary.
Ms. Young?
Thank you. Um, so, you know, I wanted to say thank you to the ordinance committee, to uh the the leadership of Councilwoman Shanahan and the hard work of the council uh member Goldstein. Um, and I know that I've shared ad nauseam my my uh my take on 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 um where where the money will be um directed to. Um, I I've said it before and I will stand by that. I think that in the spirit in my mind of how I interpret it, if we're really trying to move the needle on equity and within the community and 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 the impact that the war on drugs has had on communities, I'm not sure of the connection between the programs that we've stated, putting money towards infrastructure and lighting and all those sorts of things, how that moves the needle. Um, but I am happy to hear that we can, this is a, this is a living document, it's flexible, and I hope uh that we look at this seriously, because right now, in my opinion, the the things that we're looking to fund, although it comes from the state, are reactionary. And it does nothing to me to improve the conditions and the lives of families that have been impacted by the war on drugs. But I say all that, I will support it based on what I've heard here, and I really just came to that decision right now, because we we've said it publicly that those things are changeable. It it is flexible, and I hope it's not a tedious process to go through because we've stated it in the ordinance, because we need to have that flexibility. I appreciate all the hard work and effort, and and it's all, we're at the beginning stages of something unknown, so um we'll trip a little bit, but we will get up and we'll we'll get it right, hopefully, so. Um, I appreciate the effort.
The commission, further comment or discussion? Seeing none, um clerk, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Uveman?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cides?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Alterman?
Yes.
Mr. Meek?
No.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Love it in favor, when opposed, motion carries. That is all the items that appear on the agenda this evening. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, we are adjourned at eight forty-five.
Good night.
Night all.
Night.